Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, September 9th at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilwoman Frankwell.
Here.
Councilwoman Wood.
Present.
Councilwoman Hanks.
Present.
Councilwoman Dick.
Here.
Councilwoman Gold.
Here.
Council President Van Nuys.
Present.
We have a vote.
Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item this evening is communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impotent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comments during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please remember that this is the business meeting of the city council for Southfield. Please give respect to all speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Harmon Gunther.
Good evening. I am a member of the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee. On August 29th, uh, 28th, it was raining quite heavily on my way to the meeting. The handicap parking is on the southeast corner of Parks and Rec Building. There was a big puddle that I had to cross to get under the overhang. It is a long walk, the length of the police department, to get to the door. After the meeting, I noticed that the front of the building are four stairways with handrails. Also, at the Parks and Rec Building, in front of the building, there are three stairs with handrails. Why are the ramps for handicapped or mobile adverse people so far away from the entrances? Any one of those hand, uh, stairways can be removed and put in a slant for us to traverse, also with handicap parking close by. You know, it is, uh, I just don't see the reason why we need to have four stairways with handrails for able-bodied people. We never have those many people to traverse those. You know, it wouldn't be too much of a trouble for, first of all, for the engineering department to clean the drain out at the southeast corner of the Parks and Rec Building, so the water could diminish and make our walk shorter instead of longer, with the handicap parking in front of the building instead of way back at the end of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beatrice Peck.
Through the chair, they're, uh, one of the petitioners tonight.
Is that Michelle Davis as well? Bernice Lewis.
My name is Bernice Lewis, 24603 Primrose Lane, Southfield, 48033. I was here prior, two weeks ago, and I'm looking for information to help me get a traffic light at Grogan and Primrose Lane, which is off of Ten Mile Road. I have spoken to Councilwoman Banks this evening and come to find out something possibly was sent out to me, because my complaint was I didn't receive any, any callback or any information. So what I'd like to do, if it's okay, to check with the city clerk to make sure that my email address is correct, so I can have the information that was supposed to have come to me, come to me. So that's it, if that's okay.
Yeah, we also, we have your phone number here, which is very legible, and we can double-check that your email is correct before we send something to you.
Okay, can someone let me know this evening before I leave, or to check? I know that she tried to send it to me, I saw the message, I just didn't get it.
We also have our, our Public Works Director in the back.
Okay.
Abdul, if you could raise your hand. He, he's familiar with it, because he did have a response that was supposed to go to you.
Okay, thank you, I think that's who we were looking for earlier. Okay then, thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Jackson.
I'm here actually with one basic question. What about us? Back in 2016, Beechwood Acres Homeowner Association kinda led the charge with the community in regards to septic tank issues in neighborhoods being blindsided with connections. At that time, the Southfield Mayor and our city administrator pledged in this room and on record that they would do their due diligence to find grant money to support communities that have septic tank issues to help buffer those costs. That was 2016. We've not heard anything informal or formal from our mayor, city administrator, or our council relative to any actions of any results of them actually seeking grant funding to assist us. It is my hope that someone on council will use their authority to seek those answers for your constituents and the communities. What about us? I've watched as another community came in, maybe 60 days ago, and said that after the city performed some type of infrastructure, that every time it rains, their basements fill up with raw sewage. Saying that the installation was installed correctly is not enough if every time it rains, these people's homes, their basements flood with raw sewage. That didn't occur before the infrastructure repair. What about us? I've also seen where there's been communities that come in and they don't want three gas stations at an intersection. Well, liken that to communities that don't want three versions of liquor stores at their intersection, or three dollar stores at their intersection. What about us? I have to ask, that when the SNRI and the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corp. come to this council to ask for $100 million to support their initiatives and projects, but have not yet made any resolution to its constituents and the residents of your city, I have to ask, what about us? When is this council going to move for the people that elected you to speak for us, to stand for us, to walk with us, to work with us? What about us?
Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
As I always say, my wife really says it for everyone, "What about us?" Do you know every time I come in this council meeting, you ask us to stand up and pledge allegiance to this country, or to this city? I never stand. I love this country, but I cannot pledge allegiance to this city, or this country, that keep us on our backs. You know, my wife has reached out to hundreds of women, black men and women, and we are mobilizing all over the country, we have to. I've never seen a situation where there's no prosecution behind the $37 million theft. There's nothing to be said about the septic tanks setting us up for failure, to lose our homes. There's nothing to be said about anything that happened to black people, but the minute we talk about mobilizing, somebody come up to this podium and call black people coming together to stand together, racism. I've never in my life, we have Jewish organizations that got their own building, we got Middle Eastern organizations that got their own building, but do you know I've not yet seen something that said African-American, black, or negro in this county, in this city, but we gonna have it? And, and I understand the greatest fear that this city have is we mobilizing, because we showing you, we're not as stupid as you think we are. You tried to steal the vote, you think we forgot? You think we forgot? There's an election coming up. These people have not forgot that you wanted to have a selection over an election. Every time these wonderful people finish speaking, you let your bottom chick, or your cleanup woman, come up here and think she's rebuttling something. Let me tell you something, this is a city of some beautiful, black, professional people, and they're not stupid. They're not stupid. We're tired. We've been tired for over 400 years, and we are no longer gonna take it. Southfield is a vital organ to wrong, and we're gonna shut it down. Shut it down!
Our next speaker is Myron Thomas.
Hello, my name is Myron Thomas. This is the fourth time I've spoken in front of you with, with no response from the city council, no email, or no phone call from, as a response to any of the communications that I've made to you. I was here when they said that, uh, what is Kroger's gonna do for us as far as making that, um, that supermarket viable? And that there's four supermarkets in the city. So my question to you is, why can't we grow our own food on our own property? That's a question. The reason why I ask that question is because city ordinance decided that a greenhouse is decided as an accessory building, which means as a homeowner, I am not allowed to build my own greenhouse on my own property. So I can't build it. So I can't grow year-round. That's in the ordinance, by the way, so I heard you. The other problem that I have is Section 29, Chapter 17, has been defined as a catch-all for the city of Southfield to restrict your constituents from having whatever they want on their property in any regards. They use rat ordinances inside of agricultural environments to dictate what people can do on their property. Why do I say that? Because I've actually spoken to three of my neighbors, I live on, uh, Millville-McAllister, we back up to Holy Septaker Cemetery, who keeps things outside of their buildings year-round. They're across the fence from me. I'm prosecuted and have to go in front of Judge Arvin right now, next week, because I had some things on my property that I remediated, and still have some things on my property to build the shed that I wanna build. In fact, Section 5.23 lists non-conforming lots. I live on a non-conforming lot. A tree hit my shed. I was told by the city official, as well as ordinance, that I did not have the right to rebuild my shed, or to re-strengthen my shed. So my stuff is sitting outside, and the ordinance have started ticketing me since the beginning of '23, and I know I'm done.
Mr. Thomas, I believe at the last meeting you were gonna send us an email with the revisions that you would like to see in our ordinance, as well. I have not received that email yet.
You didn't, did you get an email on the 26th?
I did not.
I can show you the email that I sent, that I got from the, um, your website, and if you would like, I can go back, and I'll take it and email each one of you individually with it.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Harold Tyler.
Good evening, Council, my name is Harold Tyler, and my wife are both here. We live at 19210 Silvercrest Street in Hampshire Woods. First, I'd like to just thank the mayor, uh, and the administrator, and the Public Works, who resolved the issue of the slit trench that would, that would not drain water. My, my concern now is, I was here and I was told by Council Lady Banks, and she said to everyone, "I will get back with you." I never received anything from her. Nothing. Now, the workpeople for the city even came out Saturday doing work, so I have no issues with them. Council Lady Banks referred and said, "Look up the report, or the study regarding the deers." That I did. And that commission has no authority to do anything but come back with a report, and it says that they'll do it annually. I looked real clear, I've seen no report. It had a whole bunch of stuff covering every city adjacent to us. Issues that they have done, whether it's neutering, hunting, capturing, Southfield has nothing that they've said, other than, "Well, the homeowner might have to do this." And that report was, was over 200 pages, that, that I read. And it even mentioned the catchment area of, of the largest concentration, that was from 11 Mile to 9 Mile, from Evergreen to Inkster. And I would like to get some report to find out what you're gonna do, because that commission, time is up, and they can't do a thing. And that's what I need. I need an answer, and I need someone to call me. My phone number's down there again, and that's all I'm asking. I'm asking just what everybody in here is asking. And I've been in this city since 1983. That's a long time. And that means I've seen plenty of people up here, and I'm not used to having the council not answer back. And for me to start coming back here, I must really be upset, because I done got old, you know? And I got a birthday on the 27th of September. Please answer me, and I'll be 83. Answer me, please.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if I may, the night of the meeting, I did email the appropriate department heads that were going to answer your questions. I have a copy of a response that was sent to you and also CC'd to me. So because I was on that copy, I did not reach out to say, "Dear Mr. Tyler, I see that they've already responded back to you. If you didn't receive this email, I'll be more than happy to send it back to you."
I did not receive it, and I will say the same thing. When you sit there and you say, "I will," you said, "We will respond." You didn't say, "I'll go to anybody else." And even that night, I mentioned and gave thanks to those who had already started, and they took everything, everything, you know? You know, if you're gonna say, as a person up there, and you say, "I'll get back, we will get back with you," that's you personally.
Okay, I, this, I will re-forward this email, and it, our city, um, engineer is...
Then you must, the engineers have completed everything that makes the water drain, and the final stuff will ha, will have to be done next year, at the same time that they resurface the street.
Okay, thank you.
And, and maybe after, I will check that email, because my email is clear, crystal clear, and it wasn't in trash or anything. But if you're not gonna call, say that, and I'll understand that, thank you.
Our next speaker is Garland McWilliams.
Good afternoon, my name is Garland McWilliams, 15641 Pennsylvania Street. I have a couple of different concerns here. One is regarding the streets. They have started, I was in here a few other times complaining about the conditions of the streets of my area. On my street, they have started some repairs, they have done some repairs, and that's greatly appreciated on the worst parts of it, it's on my block. And they have marked off other areas, but I don't know when they're gonna do the rest of the work, or is any other work planned? I can speak on Pennsylvania, between Greenfield and Fairfax, there's a few horrible spots, you know? And you guys can drive down there, I'll, I'll give you a personal tour, myself, you And I see they, they've done Pierce, they've blacktoped Pierce, and that's appreciated. It was horrible. I just hope it lasts for a while, you know? Blacktop compared to concrete, we'll, we'll see how it works out, you know? And that's greatly appreciated. I talked to my neighbors, and they say, "Hey, it's a whole lot better than what it was." Next thing, oh, I had one more thing. I understand when Thanksgiving time comes around, road work is, ceases around that because of the weather factors, or whatever, and, you know, I'd like to know when the rest of the work will be done, either this year, or, you know, in the spring or something, but when, you know, when will it be done? Next thing I'd like to bring, the way, the vacant store on Greenfield that used to house Art Van, you had a representative, Larry Howard, um, from HRG Realty Group, was supposed to be working on that building, and every time I go by there, I don't see any, I don't see any, I don't see any motion, I don't see anything going on, and I was curious about that. And my wife and I were talking about that store, and she said, "Maybe Nordstrom's, uh, might be a good fit for that store, and they have a Norsem rack that might be a very good fit for that store." Just throwing that out there, suggestion, maybe wanna look into it, but I haven't seen anything done. You know, Northland has been torn down for a number of years, there's promises of stores, and retail stores there and everything, and there's nothing there. So we appreciate if something is done, gets done with the retail. There's nothing to do.
Your time is up.
No place is shot. Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Giselle Haley Burton.
I live on McAllister and Ten Mile, and when you turn right, when you turn north up into my street, it's all tore up. I mean, there's holes, and try to navigate and go to which side, but it's all tore up. And I said, "If you don't say anything, you know, nobody will know," but I don't know why that's true, because the city rides down my street all the time, but that needs to be addressed. Right when you pull into the street, it's just all tore up, right at that corner.
The corner of McAllister and...
Ten Mile and McAllister.
Okay. Is, which, is it the whole intersection?
The whole, yeah, the whole intersection coming into that street.
Okay.
It's all tore up.
Well, we'll forward the concern to our Public Works Department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Keeler.
The city may not respond to public comments during the meeting. The city will provide more formal response to you in the future. Couple of years ago, Ms. Harris came here and asked you about easements, twice. Did not get a response. I then asked a couple of times, and then we got two or three different responses. I've asked for what you've stated, put it in writing and send it to me. I would like the easement statement, since it was two years ago, I think we're in the future, way in the future. I've asked about the septic tank connection and tickets, put it in writing. I've also asked about the fact of somebody not being here and stating that there were some forms or something sent out to the residents about not connecting to the septic tank. I asked, "Prove it. Send it to me in writing." The only problem you'll have is, I've asked about that in a foyer, and they said there was no such thing. The secondary thing you would have is, I lived there during that time, and there was no answer. Next, you also have a problem with what Ms. Harris asked again, that we had a town hall meeting, and there were some guarantees that were said to the residents, "Please put it all in writing. Don't give us no more of your lip service. Put it in writing." Because that's all you're giving us, is lip service. Write it down. I've asked the question... I've asked the questions last week or two weeks ago that I would like to have answered. Send it back to me in writing. And oh, and the comments that have been made back to me, not answering directly to the question I've asked. Put all that in the comment as well. I'll be looking for it. Since it's taken two years to answer the question on the easements. And I wonder why it takes so long. Maybe you should type that in the future, it should be less than one year, less than six months. Give some type of time. Because your future seems too far off. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gerard Mullin.
Mr. President, good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin. Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan. 48037. Tonight, I'd like to tell a tale. A tale about two grocery stores. Two Kroger grocery stores. Both here, here in Southfield. One on 12 Mile Road, the other on 8 Mile Road. Yes, you heard me right. 8 Mile Road. Fifty years ago, both of these stores were brand-new Great Scott stores. Both were acquired by Kroger on May 19, 1990. Kroger kept the 12 Mile store and sold off the 8 Mile store to an independent grocer named Foodland. Two weeks ago, Kroger asked this council for approval for a gas station at their 12 Mile site. We've seen this movie here before. That is, eight years ago. Eight years ago, on April 11, 2016, Kroger came before this council at a COW meeting and asked for a gas station at this very same location. Deja vu all over again. Things, things didn't go very well that evening. I know I was there. Here's what happened. Kroger offended council when Kroger said they may close their 12 Mile store if they don't get approval for their gas station at 12, at the 12 Mile site. Council pushed back with numerous Kroger code violations. And then Councilman Fakasi said he was embarrassed by the 12 Mile store. And this is why Mr. Southfield shopped at Kroger's 50 Mile store in West Bloomfield Township. Council President Fraser followed. And he stated Kroger used to be a better store, but it's gone downhill. Fraser continued and said, "This city doesn't need another gas station. Instead, it needs another good grocery store." Mr. Fraser was right eight years ago, and he's right today. In the year 2024, Southfield doesn't need another gas station. Instead, Southfield needs another good grocery store, like the one on 8 Mile Road. That is Foodland. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, council. I totally agree with what my husband said. When Kroger came here and they opened up that store on 12 Mile and Evergreen, they stated that they were going to make an investment in the store and an investment in the community. Now, over 30 years ago, what type of investment have they put into that particular store? Nothing. Not a zilch. But they did, when they wanted the gas station, do the bare minimum. That's not an investment. So when they came to get the gas station, as my husband said, they gave you the same ultimatum. They said, "If you give us the gas station, we will think about making an investment into the store." If you agree to that, I'mma sell all of you the Brooklyn Bridge. And I don't even own it. We know that Kroger customers, and I have a Kroger card, I don't go to that one anymore. I'm like Mr. Fraser. And Mr. Fakasi, may he rest in peace. I go to outer Kroger stores. And it's a shame because I like the people that work in that 12 Mile and Evergreen store. They work very hard. They do their very best. Kroger has always showed what they really think of our community. They came to a meeting. You guys thought there was Kroger executives out there in the audience? It was not. It was Kroger employees. And it was the two people that's primarily responsible for putting the gas stations together. That's not corporate headquarters from Kroger. If they were concerned, they would've came to this meeting, not sending employees. They can't even give the employees their just due cost of living. And then you push them here at a meeting showing a presence when they don't even make a decision. Now, I'm gonna urge you guys not to approve Kroger and this gas station. Other gas stations in our community accept the Kroger points for gas. I know everybody likes their bonus points. And everybody wants to get a good deal on gas. But if you drive around to the gas stations in our community that have invested in their storefront, they acknowledge and they accept the Kroger's points. Do not approve this deal.
Thank you. Our next, the next items on our agenda are the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Does any council member have an item they wish to be pulled? Okay, council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A through F. A, authorization to purchase replacement JVS recording. I'm sorry. JAVS recording equipment for the 46th District Court. B, authorization for software subscription to fleet tracking system. C, receipt of bids for the tree trimming and removal services. D, authorize memorandum of understanding for participation in the Oakland County Nine Mile, Nine Mile Pathway Task Force. E, agreement with suburban mobility authority. Sorry. Authority for registr, regional, regional transportation, also known as SMART. And F, engineering works for the replacement of fire station backup generators.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve consent agenda items A through F as presented. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have two ordinances to approve or to enact.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move enactment of ordinance 1794, rezoning of the parcel at 19111 West 10 Mile Road, Southfield, Michigan, for, from OS Office Service to MUCD, Mixed Use Corridor District. And, oh, we gotta do one at a time.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to enact ordinance number 1794, which is titled PZR MUCD 24-0001. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B?
Yes. I move that we enact ordinance number 1795, PZTA 24-0002, as presented.
Support.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number 1795, PZTA 24-0002. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed? That's two, two opposed? Okay, motion passes. The opposition was Councilwoman Banks and Councilwoman Haynes. All right, next we have items, agenda items for discussion and/or action. First is item A. A presentation and discussion regarding the proposed rezoning of the south part of 19421 West 10 Mile Road from single-family to office service.
Good evening. This is the petitioner's Family Victory Fellowship Church at 19421 10 Mile Road. They currently have, they currently have split zoning. The 10 Mile portion is OS Office Service. And the southern portion is RE Single Family. They're proposing to consolidate to one zoning district of OS Office Service. They'd like to rezone the entire parcel to add a storage shed and clean up some non-conforming situations. Again, the current zoning's got a split zoning. Future land use supports rezoning. Permitted land uses in the current RE Single Families, one-family dwellings, farms, and family childcare. Special land uses include churches, synagogues, mosques, and cemeteries. The OS does allow for churches and related facilities as a permitted land use as opposed to a special land use. And these are some existing photos and conditions. We do have representatives from the church that would like to talk about what their needs are and their desires. And we spent a lot of time looking at some existing non-conforming situations. It basically comes down to, there's an existing non-conforming shed. They would like to add an additional shed to support their community services. There's some other outstanding site issues that could be cleaned up with this rezoning and make the site more accessible. You're not here to approve the shed. It's the rezoning that allows us to move forward. But in essence, they're looking for the shed for some traffic control for their community services. And with that, I'd like to invite the two young ladies here from the church to talk a little bit about their program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have afterwards.
If you can just give your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Davis, 19421 West 10 Mile Road.
Good evening. Beatrice Hillpack, 19421 West 10 Mile Road.
So we both are volunteers at Family Victory Fellowship Church. We represent our church as lead outreach volunteers as well as we're representatives for our agencies with Forgotten Harvest. We, we need this tough shed to help us with our outreach services that we're performing right now regarding our food distribution. Our mission is to restore families by removing financial hardships by, related to food insecurities. And in order to do that, we want to, we are requesting approval to rezone from RE and OS to all OS to install a new storage shed. Our project goal is to provide good nutritious food for the community and operate our food outreach in a safe and efficient manner for our clients and our volunteers. We've been feeding the community over 20 years on holidays mainly. We had a non-perishable pantry in the basement where we would give emergency food to families. But in 2019, we just felt a greater need to serve the community. So we reached out to Forgotten Harvest to find out ways that we could work with them, partner with them in order to feed this community and increase our food outreach. And so in 2020, Forgotten Harvest granted us, well, in the midst of our inquiry, COVID hit. Right, so it, it, so they gave us COVID-19 emergency implementation status in order to start our food outreach. And we began our first mobile pantry food outreach in July of 2020, again, in the midst of COVID. We serve every second and fourth Mondays of each month from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. And it's a contactless delivery to the trunks of vehicles. We are the only super site. We're considered a super site. We're the only super site serving this community within a four-to-eight mile radius on the days and times that I mentioned. No client is denied service. We're all-inclusive. Our intake is secure and safe. And we respect our client, we have a respectable client process. And clients, all our clients are treated with dignity. So, why we're here, we need a tough shed. Right now, what we do is all of our supplies are dispersed throughout the church, inside the church. We don't have a key to the church. So in the morning, we have to, we might get there before the truck, 7:00, 7:30 in the morning. We have to call someone to open up the church for us, which is usually someone in the back, a teacher in the back. We have to walk to the back to ask a teacher to open up for us. Once we open up, we have to go throughout the church to get our supplies wherever they are in the church. And sometimes they're moved and we can't, you know, we have a little difficulty finding things. But we get our supplies out. And then we're able to get, get started. So we need this tough shed because we need to exercise more control over our operation process, which would increase our productivity. We can hit the ground running. It's a secure and safe space for our equipment. We have to worry about if it's been moved somewhere and we don't know where it might be or if someone else has used or borrowed it. This, our shed will be locked up and only accessible to team members, readily accessible. And it's, there's a community beautification issue here because our cones and things are set outside the current shed. There's a current shed out there. We don't use, use this for church use only. It has their lawn equipment, that kind of stuff in it. And so it would increase our storage space so that we can get more equipment that we need for our food process, for our food distribution. For example, right now, I have a hand cart that I purchased from Costco. And I have a garment rack that's in my garage. And it can't be used, brand new, can't be used because we don't have any place to put it. And so that's why we need our shed. It would, it would create, you know, it would give us the opportunity to accept donations for equipment and those kind of things. Because right now, we can't do that. We can't even purchase any more of the equipment that we need. So that's why we need this. In addition to that, I want to add one more thing. The tough shed is not to store food. We are not storing food in this tough shed. This is only for equipment, for outreach purposes. And now Beatrice is going to give you some stats on our, on our food distribution process. And summarize things, and then, well, end there.
Again, good evening, city council. So as Michelle explained the process, I just want to take you through the day and the life of our mobile food pantry, based on car intakes. So no one is turned away. Currently, we have about 150 to 200 cars per distribution. And we serve households that range from 200 and up. And I'll share with you some of the statistics that we log into the database with Forgotten Harvest on a, on a monthly basis. The demographics are female 60.19%, male 34.64%, and those that give no response, about 5.17%. Right now, our statistics show that 247 in the month of June, 247 cars were, were served. And a car could pick up for four families or more. We have grandmothers coming through. We have what we call food ambassadors. They come through and they pick up for senior buildings. So they could be picking up for 15 different households. And a household includes up to four people. So one household is four people. In July, it has increased from 341 cars or households to 768. Again, one car- In July, it has increased from 341 cars or households to 768. Again, one car could be responsible for four or more households. So, you can see the trend is going up as far as the need for food insecurity in the city of Southfield as well as neighboring communities.
So, I can add one thing?
Sure.
Okay, just want to add one thing. As you know, that we've kind of had to suspend our outreach because of the work being done on Red River and Ten Mile Road. And so, right now, we don't have access, cars can't come into our parking lot. And so, that's been very disappointing for us that we haven't been able to serve the community because it's something that we're very passionate about. Just wanted to let you know that.
So, through the chair, thank you for that background information. Again, basically, council is to consider the rezoning. And one of the limitations is under the existing zoning, they have to have a 50-foot setback for the shed, which would put the shed right in the middle of the parking lot and, and access. So, looking through all of the ways to move forward for this project and clean up all the non-conforming situations, basically rezoning from RE to OS gives them greater flexibility, allows us to clean up some issues on the site. So, when this comes back on September 30th, you're basically making your determination about the rezoning. The, the shed permit is done through the building department. They'll need to seek a minor waiver from the zoning board of appeals and everything else can be done administratively.
You said the shed would be done through the administrative?
We, we can do most of this administratively. The shed permit will be handled through the building department.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Cruz?
Yes, ladies, thank you for your presentation. I admire what you're doing.
Thank you.
And I have no problem with this in my mind. I was just curious, are you all with Forgotten Harvest or are you with the church?
The church.
Okay.
It's a dual partnership, but we, we work through the church for Forgotten Harvest.
Oh, okay.
There is a Family Victory Fellowship Church.
Yes, yes. Okay, that was the only question I had, sir.
Right. Councilman Brightwell?
I, I think you just answered my, my question. In, in, in listening to you, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly in, in favor. This is, this is just informational purposes only. And I think this question is, do you have the full support of the church with respect to what you're doing?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay. Do you, what drove this question? Well, you indicated that you do not have access to the church. Is that correct?
Yes.
We don't have access. We, we're there.
We don't have keys to the church.
Yes.
Yeah, but we can get in. We just have to call someone in the school to let us in. Yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay, well, that's fine. You, you mentioned that you do have the full support of the church in doing what you're doing.
Correct.
Okay, good enough. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Councilman Haynes?
I just want to say thank you to you for volunteering and doing what you do for the community. The number of people that you gave is a large number of people that you do serve. And it's so important that our churches do open up the doors to the community and serve. And I know sometimes I hear in some churches how they don't have enough volunteers for the food pantry. And thank you for your willingness to do that and also send the best regards to your church for what they do to help support the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yep. And again, you know, we'll see you back on the 30th for, we'll have a public hearing for the rezoning. Again, thank you, thank you for the service. It is a nice service. It is unfortunate that because of the road construction, you can't get people, but at least there's road construction fixing the streets. So, it's a double-edged sword. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Alright, next we have a presentation and discussion regarding the proposed rezoning and site plan for 25100 Northwestern Highway to permit the renovation conversion of the existing hotel to multiple family residential apartments for veterans. And this is, we saw this presentation.
You saw preliminary discussion of this presentation? We're back here to refresh your memory prior to the public hearing on the 30th. So, we'll try to be brief. But again, existing zoning is B3 General Business, proposed rezoning is RC Regional Center to rezone the parcel from B3 General Business to RC Regional Center to permit the conversion of the existing hotel into multifamily residential use for use as a veterans' village. Again, existing conditions of the Holiday Inn. And there won't be any major exterior changes. There'll be some improvements on landscaping and security. There's a number of current uses in the B3. Proposed zoning is Regional Center, which is adjacent to the property, and it does allow for multiple family uses. They have submitted a site plan and a floor plan. But I will invite the petitioner to come up to do a brief overview of the Tunnel to Towers Foundation, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
If you could just give your name and address, please.
Sure.
We got the long version a few months ago.
Yes.
Gavin Naples, Vice President of the Tunnel to Towers Foundation. Thank you very much, City Council. This is our second time back. You have heard this, but I'll go through it again. Our foundation began in the wake of the 9/11 terrorist attacks in New York, New York City. Firefighter Stephen Siller was a Brooklyn firefighter who was off duty that morning going to play golf with his brothers. He heard that the south tower had been hit by the airplane. He drove his car to the base of the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel, which was closed to vehicular traffic that day. So, he got out of his car, he put 60 pounds of gear on his back, and he ran nearly four miles through the underground tunnel into the south tower and was never recovered. He died that day saving others. He left behind five children. From that sacrifice, his brothers and sisters got around a kitchen table and said, "We need to honor what he did for New York City and for our country." And the Tunnel to Towers Foundation was born. Nearly 20-plus years later, the foundation has grown from that kitchen table to nearly a half a billion dollar a year organization that gives 95 cents of every dollar away to our programs and has provided over 1,200 mortgage-free homes to catastrophically injured service members, the families of fallen first responders, and Gold Star families throughout the nation. Our newest program seeks to help veterans that are at most at risk. Our new program is aimed at eradicating homelessness amongst veterans nationwide. So, for 35,000 veterans experiencing homelessness right now, chronic homelessness, that's what the federal government admits, the number's actually much higher, 12, 2,400 in Michigan alone. And so, to address this tremendous problem, we've developed a two-pronged model. The first is our veterans' villages. We're going to the largest metro areas throughout the nation where the rates of homelessness are highest, and we're acquiring hospitality properties as well as raw land and developing permanent affordable residential housing units with 24/7 supportive services wraparound on-site for our veterans. It's not enough to just provide high-quality housing accommodation to a veteran that's struggling. You need to provide a platform of rehabilitation and eventual reintegration into the community, which is our ultimate objective with this program. And I'll go into the 24/7 wraparound supportive services that we have on-site here. The second prong, to give you a holistic view of what we're doing, is outside of these large metro areas, we have our National Case Management Network. And that is anywhere in the nation that a veteran or their family is experiencing homelessness or about to backslide into homelessness, they call our foundation. And we have an internal team of case managers, employment specialists, housing coordinators, mental health clinicians, that onboard these veterans. We provide them direct financial assistance to get them housed in their area in two, three, four, or five-bedroom apartments, houses that suit their needs and their family demographic. And then we work with over 1,000 supportive service organizations throughout the nation that provide them with that wraparound supportive service model. So, if it's a family of five sleeping in a van in North Dakota, or Arkansas, or Louisiana, or even in Detroit, or Southfield, they can call our foundation. We're able to help them in real time, get them housed, work with them to get their VA benefits that are entitled to them based on their service. And then if they need a PTSD clinic, or an attorney, or landlord, or a mental health clinician, or employment opportunity, we work with over 1,000 supportive service providers to provide that platform for them. Just to give you a scope of what we've done this year, this year alone, we'll provide housing assistance to over 5,000 veterans and over 2,000 children. Those numbers will grow exponentially as we strengthen up our National Case Management Network, our relationship with the VA, and bring more and more of our veterans' villages online. All of our residences are high-quality. Everyone has their own bathroom. Everyone has their own kitchen. This is not a shelter. This is not a transitional site. There's no communal living here. This is a, a single-room occupancy for men and women, and they have their own space that's dignified and safe for them. We have a litany of supportive service spaces that we build out on the first floor and throughout the different levels of our veterans' villages, gyms, multipurpose rooms, clothing rooms, workforce development rooms, common areas to allow veterans to interact with other veterans and obviously the on-site staff. Here are just some of the supportive services that we provide, entitlements assistance, employment assistance, case management, behavioral health assistance, peer support, a litany of other services that the Tunnel to Towers Foundation provides, 24/7 on-site, as I said. And for sort of the ancillary services that make a house a home, we partner with other organizations for pet therapy, and art therapy, and music therapy, and cooking classes, and apprenticeships. We have a community, the community really gets galvanized around our veterans' villages. They take our veterans out on fishing trips, ATV rides, and they book, bake us cookies and Thanksgiving turkeys. It's really a conduit for the community and other organizations in the same space to funnel their services through one centralized location. We provide daily funded transportation, privately funded, to and from the nearest VA, to employment opportunities, banks, grocery stores, restaurants, wherever the veterans need to go, so that their physical location is not a barrier to them getting around. This is a fully funded project, privately funded by the Tunnel to Towers Foundation. The acquisition, renovation, and maintenance is funded in perpetuity by our foundation. We're not asking for a dollar from anyone. And this is nearly $15 million more that we're going to be investing in Southfield to address this problem. We're also not tied to any federal funding of any sort, so we're able to be incredibly nimble and responsive to the needs of the veteran and the surrounding area. Picture says a thousand words. This is our Houston Veterans Village. Opened last year, provides housing and supportive services 24/7 for 131 veterans. In Atlanta, we're currently under construction for the conversion of a former Wingate Hotel, 90-unit permanent housing complex. Tampa, Florida, Manatee County was gracious enough to deed us nine acres of land in Bradenton, where we're going to be knocking down a utilities district building and building an 84-unit permanent housing complex with 38 of our comfort homes. Buffalo, New York, we're knocking down a former nursing home and constructing a 94-unit permanent housing complex, which is four minutes from the Buffalo VA Hospital. Toms River, New Jersey, we were just approved a week and a half ago to develop a 100-unit permanent housing complex with 20 of our comfort homes, 10 minutes from the Toms River Veterans Affairs Hospital. Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, the capital of Pennsylvania, right on the Susquehanna River, we're developing a 64-unit permanent housing complex and a village of 20 of our comfort homes. Las Vegas, Nevada, across the street from the largest VA medical hospital in Nevada, 100-unit permanent housing complex. Riverside, California, we're currently joint partnership and grantors of a housing complex that provides permanent housing to 175 veterans on March Air Force Base. And in West Los Angeles, which is the epicenter of homelessness and veteran homelessness, the Tunnel to Towers Foundation, along with a group of other organizations in California, put together nearly a billion dollars to transform a 388-acre campus that was deeded by Abraham Lincoln back in the 1860s to the VA, and it's going to provide housing to over 3,000 veterans once completed by the end of this decade. In Southfield, we are proposing a conversion of the current 98-unit extended stay Holiday Inn into a 90-unit permanent housing apartment building with 24/7 supportive services for our veterans. Many other villages coming soon, all throughout the nation. And we just feel that every night we don't act is another night a veteran doesn't get back. And no veteran should ever be left out on the streets of the country that they volunteered to protect. If you and I wouldn't live in this facility, we would not impose it on our veterans. So, I thank you very much for your consideration. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes. Thank you for the presentation. I wasn't here when you were here before. So, it's, it's very intriguing. And of course, I would love to make sure we're supporting our veterans. My father is one in particular, of course, and most of my family. But the question that I have for you was just simply, you said there's single units, like for one person? Or like, I'm trying to ask, like, if, let's say, my dad and my mother want to live in one of these. Is that possible?
Yes. So, each of the units are single-room occupancy for one veteran, men and women. But the beauty of our program, again, is if there's a family, or, you know, a mother with children, or a father with children, through our National Case Management Network, we're able to put them in a housing accommodation that suits their need. A family of four wouldn't necessarily fit in one of this, and we wouldn't want to impose it. You know, we're not going to cluster people to where it's not feasible. But we're able to help families, no matter their location, especially in these areas where we're doing this.
And the other question that I just have, if the veteran is deceased, does the wife or husband, whatnot, is it extended to them as well? Or it's just, has to be the actual veteran still living there?
So, the, their apartment, their rental units, right? The veterans have skin in the game. They pay rent, never more than 30% of their income, and never more than the affordable housing designation of the area. So, it's, you know, affordable and it's sustainable for them. We also work, you know, through a lot of means to provide financial literacy and entitlements assistance to get them, you know, income benefits. But for families, through our case management network, we, we do assist them. So, it's not something that would matriculate to a family. But through our other programs, our Gold Star Program, for instance, we do help the families of the fallen that have deceased.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Brightwell?
This is a wonderful project. I am a veteran, and I've been supportive of the veterans' issues for over 10 years, and as the former chair of the Southfield Veterans Commission. What we're respected is, do you have your in-house, for, for the various facilities, do you have your own in-house security system?
Yes. So, we spend millions of dollars on that. There was a slide here, but it's not for security. We take the security of these villages and the surrounding community very importantly. It's of paramount importance to us. We have CCTV that captures every single inch of, you know, the perimeter of the property of the village as well as the common areas. We have 24/7 on-site security there, peer support specialists that are trained in de-escalation. We work very closely with the police, fire, and EMS, as well as the sort of cert and heart teams that are a little bit less than the first, you know, responding agencies to make sure that's as warm as possible, right? And then, it really starts with screening and intake. So, any veterans that have been dishonorably discharged, have any record of any sexual-based offenses, or have any major violent crimes, they're precluded from our site. So, these are, it's not a handout, it's really a hand up. These are for veterans that are looking to make a change in their life and, you know, reintegrate back into the community.
Okay, excellent. You touched base on the screening process and also the application process. How is one chosen to be an occupant of this, of these facilities? I mean, just a little snup?
Sure.
A little thumbnail?
Yep, no problem.
I understand.
So, we work very closely with the VA on that. We are not beholden to the VA, however. So, people reach out to us organically. Veterans reach out to us. We have hundreds of veterans that reach out to us every, every month that are assisted by our case management network. So, we go through, you know, a screening process to see who would benefit most from it. But obviously, there's more than 90 veterans that are struggling, you know, in the surrounding area. So, that's really the beauty of, of the program that we've implemented, is that while this will house 90 veterans, we can help more than just the 90 with our case management network. And, you know, an important distinction to make is that this is permanent housing. This is not something where every six months, there's going to be new people in here. It's not, you know, a federally funded program. We hope that veterans reintegrate back into the community. Again, that's our ultimate objective. Go on to buy homes, reintegrate with their families, go on to get entrepreneurial career paths. But if this is an older class of veteran that may have a little bit more trouble assimilating back into the community, think you're sort of Vietnam War veterans, that are looking for a permanent place to live out their golden years in comfort and dignity, they can do so for the, you know, for the duration at the Tunnel to Towers Foundation. This is This is long-term permanent housing.
Very great. You have a good model, and I'll be pulling for the success of your model here.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Haynes?
Just wanted to say, when you had your presentation before, it was excellent, and it still is, and the fact that you all are self-supportive is really good, and we welcome you into the community. It's such a great honor to serve the people that have served this country, and I understand you also have a run that's coming up soon, too, which is really nice, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all and hoping that the community embraces everything that you do to support the veterans. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. There's no other questions, but this will come back on September 30th. Terry?
Yeah. Gavin, just a clarification. I know these are single-room occupancy, and you do provide supportive services for families and so forth. Is a veteran and their spouse able to rent one of these rooms, or is it just exclusively for singles?
It's exclusively for singles, but you can have visitors. There's a visitor policy, but, you know, it's basically a large studio for that intent. We do have a lot of people that...
And then spouses and families, you would provide supportive services for other locations?
Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on that.
And just to go into that for one more second, we do have a lot of people that want to get married or, you know, reintegrate with their families, and through our Case Management Network, we set them up. They move out of the village and then they go on to, you know, larger apartments, larger homes.
And I think the slide originally said 90 units, but I thought you clarified it would be 85, or is it somewhere in that range, 85 to 90 units?
Eighty-seven, in that range, yeah. I don't have the exact...
All right, so as the council president said, you'll come back on the 30th for official public hearing. You probably won't do the full presentation, we'll just talk about the zoning, and if you could be available to answer questions, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right. After the council portion of the meeting, we will go in alphabetical order, so we'll start with Councilman Banks. Switch it up.
Thank you. I have nothing to add this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Brightwell.
Keeping with the theme of the day of veterans, I just want to announce that the VA is now allowing reimbursement veterans who have to attend the urgent care clinics that are around various neighborhoods. You have to be eligible for VA services, so if you are currently in the VA system, if you need to go to a urgent care location for a broken bone, a toothache, numerous other little things that you would typically go to the urgent care places for, the VA will reimburse you for those expenses. The main thing you need to do is make sure that you are, through your primary care physician at the VA, your records are currently valid at the VA, and also, if you, if there's a urgent care facility in your neighborhood, why don't you get the name of that urgent care facility, and just to make sure that the VA recognizes that urgent care facility and/or that company that is representing the urgent care. They won't just pick up somebody who has a little clinic on the corner, but anyway, they have to be reputable, and they have to be authorized by the VA. And they cover all, practically all services that are offered by the urgent care, except dental. Dental is not a VA benefit currently, so that's... Although, my message is, for veterans, a lot of times, we've been doing this for years, that if you know a veteran, just pass that info on, and so if you know someone, just pass it on. And the, I can be contacted here at City Hall, but the veteran should definitely contact his primary care physician at the VA facility, whether he's at Detroit, Ann Arbor, Kalamazoo, or whatever facility he might be associated with or near him, and just make sure you're cleared, your records are good with the VA. Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention two things that I heard during public comments. Number one dealt with Northland, and I think we, as a council, need to be more aggressive in at least getting one project finished. I know my colleague, Councilman Banks, and I have mentioned that to each other before, but, you know, I think people are a little bit frustrated with the fact that it has taken so long to even finish one building, and why are we not moving faster than we should be, or at least we perceive we should be. And so I would just like to ask the council, join me and that kind, and the residents in pushing forward and trying to make sure something gets completed, so we can see some action going on there. The second thing was about notices when street repairs are coming. We just did Pierce, as someone mentioned earlier, and there were a number of residents, and when I say a number, I'm talking about five, that reached out to me, that said, you know, they never got a notice. They woke up that morning, trucks were out there doing their job as instructed, but it was not well communicated, and so I just want to make sure that we're conscious of the fact that everyone's not being notified all the time, and to even ask the question, how are we notifying people? Are we just going by passing out handbills, or whatever you would call it, you know, sticking things in their door, or are we actually mailing them, to them, to their address? That would be something that we might want to consider as well. And then lastly, Go Lions, what's that? Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Haynes?
Couple of things here. Fred touched on it last time we had a meeting, but I just wanted to reiterate. At Bedford Park, we had the opportunity to have some volunteers out there, out there to beautify the park, and if you haven't been over to Bedford Park, you should go there. It's a beautiful park. I have never been there myself, but I wanted to say a special thanks to Corinne, the artist that really did a beautiful job, and there were several companies that came out, and I'd like to identify those companies if I could real quick, because these people came out, took the entire part of their day to paint, to clean, to do lots of things that normally, if it had taken the city employees to do it, one, it would have cost a lot of money, and it would have been a lot of time, but for them to take out of their day, to come together in such a community effort, it was really such a nice thing. And those companies are Applied Innovation, Bart Maloa, CBRE, City of Southfield, Clarion's Technology, Kamau, Credit Acceptance, Denso, Eaton, Epitex, Hatzel Beulah, Bluestone Communication, lots of people from Lawrence Tech, students and all, Magma, Morelli, Rediko, Robert Half, Rixso, I think it is, S&amp;P, and Stefanini, Sun Community, Verizon, I think I named most of them. And these companies really came out and rolled up their sleeves and just got the job done. It's such a beautiful park. We have so many wonderful, beautiful parks in this city, and I encourage you to take advantage of them on September 22nd. Parks and Rec is having a beautiful walk at the newly renovated, wow, it's right in my neighborhood, and I can't even think of the name of it, Carpenter Lake, Carpenter Lake. You guys have got to go there, get your camera, get your nice shoes, and bring your family. People come from out of town just to view that park. We have so many beautiful things about Southfield, and so many beautiful people that are talking about the beautiful things that we're doing, so when you get that chance, you be the one that do that, and come up and tell us here. We need more of that at the mic, as a matter of fact, too. And also, I wanted to congratulate all of the residents that received awards for the beautification, for the beautiful gardens. The mayor and Councilman Charles Hicks and I were out here giving the awards out. My goodness, we have so many beautiful gardens in this city. Sometimes I just drive around to get more ideas about how I can do my garden better, and just do different things, and some of these people are so creative. I mean, there's better homes and garden has nothing on our city here. So I would encourage you all, during this season now, it's fall, during the cleanup time, you know, get a cup of coffee or some tea, and watch, and drive around and watch these pictures, and maybe next year, you can be on that map to nominate yourself, or nominate your neighbor. I spoke to a couple of people, I said, you can even nominate yourself, so just to let you know that, don't feel bad about bragging about yourself. And a special thanks to the Southfield Parks and Garden Club, to Michael Mannion, and all the volunteers that went out. They are actual people that go out and judge these gardens, so it takes, they take time out to do that, and it's very important. So these are the things that help to keep Southfield beautiful. Beautiful people, beautiful gardens, we just love when we have those type of things, and it just gives me joy, and I'm sure others up here, too, to see that happen. And also, a special thanks to everyone that cleaned up that pathway, that pathway over by Eisenhower. I can ride my bike through there without pruners, without a broom to knock down the spiderwebs. It's clean, and I'm sure the other bikers are just as happy that it's clean. I'm grateful to whoever did it. I know that the fence does have to be fixed, and I know that's going to take some time, but I'm just thankful to everybody in the city that got that job done, and I'm grateful when anything gets done, and I understand, too, even being up here, that some things take time, and I also understand that I would like for things to happen just like that, too, but I know they take time, and also, they know that we have to have patience with some things, and with that patience, a little bit more respect. If we could just have that, that would be so great, because whatever we do, whatever we say when we come up here, or when we speak and we talk, we represent so much. We represent our city, our residents, our families, and let's just keep that in mind, because the seed, the small seed that starts in the ground with gardening, is the same seeds that starts in the ground with kindness. So if we could just spread that a little bit more, I think we all would be grateful for that. Thank you so much.
And just to clarify, I was also at the...
I'm sorry.
The event for the Beautiful Lunds, but that's okay.
And he gave a nice speech, too, so sorry about that. I apologize.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes, just real quick. I've been getting a lot of communication on the excitement on receiving the new trash containers. But I've also gotten a lot of questions that I want to make sure that I'm not answering incorrectly, so my ask would be, is if we were to make the frequently asked questions on our website, where we speak to the trash cans a little bit more robust, some of the questions posed is, hey, how do I buy another one? Or where should I place the, what is the proper term, is it canister?
Yeah.
Cart. Do I place it on the sidewalk, on the concrete, or do I place it on the edge of my driveway? Other questions, where do I store it to be in compliance with the ordinance? And some of those questions were not posed or identified in the website article, so I'm just looking for any support to make sure that people know that they're doing the right thing in use and storage of that cart. That's it?
Okay. Councilman Hoag?
Nothing.
Okay. I just had a couple of things I did also want to touch on the, I was going to talk about the garbage carts as well. I know there was a surprise to many residents who woke up one morning, and there was this big 95-gallon garbage cart. Originally, they were not supposed to be delivered until October, and then one day, the city got a call after hours, we're delivering them tomorrow. So the city did put together, as quickly as they can, some information. The information on the website does say how to order more if you do need. It's the same link for recycling and for trash pickup, you just have to pick which one you want. If you do want another garbage cart, the cost is $95 with a $15 shipping fee, delivered directly to your home, but every resident does receive one, and they are GPSed to your home. So when they were being delivered, they were scanned, and there is a record of homes that were missed. If you did not get one, please reach out to the Public Works Department, and they can make sure that you get one. It does take a little bit of time to deliver about 30,000 cans, so they were doing their best. If you did not get one, and you are a homeowner, because they are from homeowners only, not for condos, not for apartments, 248-796-4860 is for Southfield Public Works, and they can look up to see if you had a cart delivered, or if, for whatever reason, you were missed. But I do, I do think that we do need some additional FAQs out there, but we were kind of blindsided a little bit, but we're glad we got them out. I know that, I think more people were excited about them than not excited. Same thing, if you don't want a cart, you can call the Public Works Department, they will come and pick it up if you do not want to use it, because you can still use your 32-gallon trash can, not a problem. They'll take either one, but just remember to, if you're going to use a 32-gallon can, to keep it under 60 pounds. You know, there were some questions about road repair, planning projects, things like that. On our website, on the city's website, on the homepage, all the way on the bottom of the homepage, is a link to construction updates, and that will tell you any project that has been completed with, it has a map of areas that have been completed, as well as potential future projects. Sometimes the future projects are a year or two out, sometimes it just says "future" without a date. Those are major construction projects that we do with our roadways. Smaller projects that we're doing in areas near Greenfield and Mount Vernon, some of those streets, those are spot concrete jobs that are determined on an annual basis. There's not, there's not much pre-planning. Everything depends on the budget and/or the need, depending on the year-after-year cycle. I do know that they are already looking at potential areas for next year's spot concrete, but those are not put on a map, because those are not considered major construction projects for roads. Those are just, you know, a bunch of squares here and there, but the major ones are listed there. The same thing, on the city's website, under the Planning Department, there is an online portal, or I should say, an interactive map, that discusses the different planning projects that are currently being discussed in the city, or have recently been approved. You know, there were questions about the Star Theater on 12 Mile, and what's going on with that. I did check, it does say that it was bought by a church and what they plan to do with it. Once the city approves the plan or goes through the motions, you know, there's not much the city does to enforce the plans, because we can't control, you know, the finances or the construction timeline of private businesses. If they do take too long, sometimes they do have to come back to the city if their approvals run out, usually after about 18 months. But there is that, under the Planning Department website, there is this online planning, interactive website that you can take a look at. The last thing I wanted to mention is that on Friday, September 20th, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM here at City Hall in front, in the front circle, where we have our peace polls, we will be hosting an International Day of Peace Ceremony from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, again, Friday, September 20th, from 5:00 to 6:00. The City of Southfield, in collaboration with May Peace Prevail on Earth International Foundation and the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Task Force, will be hosting the International Day of Peace Celebration. It should be some, a nice little presentation with a few speeches from some of the surrounding leaders in the community. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Well, good evening. Just a couple of comments, response, there was a speaker this evening that claimed I said that I would get grants for sewers. I never claimed that, and we did, there were, we did look into it, but there were no grants. Secondly, there was, I did work with city council approval, and we greatly reduced the tap-in fee for people connecting to the sewer. That was something that was in our control, and so we made it easier for people to tap- And so we made it easier for people to tap in, as the tap-in fees had been going up, 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 and we reduced it. Also, another comment was about city council giving $100,000 to the nonprofit. That is patently false, no such thing ever happened.
Can you speak up a little louder? Can you say that again, please?
All right, well, I'm at the mercy of cable downstairs. All right. I'll repeat, there is, we did look into grants, but there was no promise that we would be able to secure grant money for individual homeowners to connect to city sewer. We found nothing. One thing that we could control is the tap-in fee. When you connect, whether it's new construction or existing construction, and you tap into the sewer, the sanitary sewer, there is a fee. We reduced that fee by thousands of dollars. That was something that the city could control. As far as the grants, I mean, they just were not. Then there was a comment made about the city council approved $100,000 to the Southfield Nonprofit Neighborhood Corporation. That is patently false, that never happened. There was never any such action. The SNRI program that I think the person was referring to was funded completely by non-city revenues. The rehab of homes and so on was all done with a loan from the Southfield Nonprofit Neighborhood Corporation to the SNRI. So I don't know where they get these facts, but I know it sounds good to alarm people, but neither of those things are true. On a more positive note, on September 20th, we will be once again observing International Day of Peace in Southfield. This will be from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. It'll be at our peace polls right out front here. And with representatives of Martin Luther King Task Force and the International Peace Association, the public and all of council, and the clerk, and treasurer are all invited to attend. Again, that's Friday, the 20th, 5:00 PM, outside in the Circular Drive at the peace polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. Few, few comments in somewhat jumping on to the mayor's remarks. I will remind council that we did establish, funded by our water department, a loan program to help people connect to the city sanitary system. In the late city, in the late 90s, the city spent a considerable amount of money, I don't have the exact figure with me this evening, and we built out the sewer system for the west end of the city. That was financed by the entire city through its enterprise fund, the water fund. So every time you're buying water, and in your water bills, your charges for your water in your sewer, you help finance that system to build the sanitary system for roughly 2,000 residents, primarily on the west end of the city. As that system was built, there was what was called a tap-in fee, that you paid a tap-in fee, and then you paid a fee based on a linear foot charge. Those fees were remodeled, were restructured to a flat $5,000 fee, as the mayor considered. That was a cost bore by the rest of the water users. That's really what we're talking about, is what is equitable to the other homeowners, residents in the city. Week after, every council meeting, we hear these remarks being made, and frankly, they're sloppy and careless. You know, how that system was paid for, everyone else is paying for. Those bonds that were sold were tax-exempt bonds. We've not found a funding source that pays for what is a private function. That private function is where your home connects to that sanitary sewer. To those of you who are already on this, the sanitary sewer system, if your line collapsed, that would be your expense, your burden to bear. So we've set up a loan program, reduced interest rate, again, apologize for not having, having the exact facts there. We also set up a program that if you're low, low income, we'll do it as an interest-predefered loan. No other city has done that. Regarding grants, what happened in San Marino, this is, that was very unique, that we found a private function to connect the water lines from our water system to their homes. You know, so we did find a grant. Clerk Jackson may recall a conversation with her and our, our other county commissioner during the COVID, when the dollars were coming through. And we talked about septic connections, roughly 13,000, what would it cost to connect at that point the remaining 1,200 homes? We're down to under 1,000 homes that are connected. The ordinance that has been in place since that, those investments were made in the late 90s, which we started enforcing in 2014, every three years, your septic tank has to be certified that it is functioning. You can keep it, work as long as your system is certified that it's functioning, you do not have to do anything. If your system's not working, you can rebuild your system. Most folks have found that it's more cost-effective to connect to the city sewer system. This is a very difficult topic. I understand that people, the average cost is about $13,000 per home is where we, we average. We recognize it's a big number. But again, the rest of the, the rest of Southfield paid for that system to be built. If you look at how public infrastructure is financed, what we did was the typical fashion. For us to pay for your private line to connect to our system is just not the norm. Are there grants for it? We've not found any grants for it. Perhaps had the second infrastructure bill had passed, maybe there would have been money for it, but we haven't seen any yet. When you talk to people at Eagle about this, what they'll typically say is, well, we'll offer the city money for its revolving loan program. The state operates a revolving loan fund to fund this infrastructure. But when you get to the detail, it's not to connect that private section. You know, so we're out there still figuring this out, we've made tremendous progress. When I interviewed here 16 years ago, this was a topic in my dinner meeting with my former, the former city administrator and HR, they were talking about, what do we do with the Dirty Dozen and the Filthy Fifty? Those were properties where the waste was percolating out of the ground, you had toilet paper and other fecal material. And I'm going to remind you, we still have a good number of people who are on wells. And in certain cases, it seems about every 15 months, we'll have someone come in whose well is failing, or the fecal count is too high in their well, because their septic system's right on top of their well. So we, we deal with those as they come. So, you know, I think Southfield needs to be commended, that you've set up a loan program, that you put in place a program to help folks who are low, low income. And I'm going to tell you, your peers, and I know a couple of you are going to be in, up at MML Conference, ask, because we have, and we've asked at conferences, our public works people have, you know, I think we're to be commended, but it seems week after week, we get tore apart for doing the right thing and making an investment. And frankly, for myself and my staff, it becomes a little discouraging. I want to speak to our ordinances. Our ordinances are reasonable and customary. The ordinances that have come up from a gentleman who's been here four times, someone's calling that in, folks. Some, one of his neighbors or someone's calling our code people, because he is on a good-sized piece of property. And my staff is enforcing the city ordinance or state law. Law by state is you've adopted an international construction code that we have to follow. Things like rat walls, when these sheds are rebuilt, that's when your trigger points are there. And I apologize, no one likes being told what they can or can't do with their property, but we're following the law. Now, there may be a few changes we can make, but, you know, the international, the construction piece, that's out of our jurisdiction, that's in Lansing's hands. But the, you know, other pieces, you know, maybe there's something on the lot size, and maybe, you know, that should go to legislative. But we keep hearing this, our ordinances are reasonable and customary with our peers and our neighbors. We're not out of line with what Farmington Hills, or Livonia, or Redford, or, you know, and to the east, we're consistent. So I want to remind you of that. And again, someone made that call, that they weren't happy with the situation. And I know, you know, someone doesn't want to hear that, but someone called that in. So I'll stop there, I know we have a, we're going to go closed door, and then evening's going to be a little bit longer, and we are making progress, we're 70 days in with priority waste. The complaints that my office is getting are diminishing, we're still getting a handful. But things, it's getting better. I think as council president says, the large carts were well received, I wish we would put them in place five years ago. I mean, that was the last time the decision was in front of us.
It wasn't for lack of trying, to get those big carts.
If I could just add that, if I recall correctly, the bond for the West Side Sewers was $33.8 million. That's a huge investment. The other thing that we did, and certainly could be resurrected, we worked with a couple of local, you know, if you're connecting, obviously you have to dig, have somebody do the trenching. So we worked with a couple of companies to do a discount by bulk. If more people signed up, the price per foot of putting in a sewer line was reduced. So we offered that besides the, and it's a 3% loan, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
3%. Try that today. And the other thing that we, when we investigated this, people who have failed septic systems, it's not just the tank, it is the field. And replacing a septic field is going to be a lot more money than connecting to a city sewer. The field is so important to the water flowing and being filtered from the septic tank. And you have the added cost, every so often, a septic tank has to be pumped out, has to be cleaned out, there are too many sediments in a septic tank.
Councilman Hicks?
Just, just more education for me. The common theme that I'm hearing is communication.
Can you speak up, please?
The common thing that I'm hearing is a concern on communication. So I'm not sure if and when, or how, it was communicated to the person who had the ordinance concerns, who responded back to that person, if they've come here. Because I read through part of the email that he did send this evening, where he reached out to resources within planning, but I didn't see any response. Maybe there was, and maybe he just didn't forward that. The other question that I had was related to the tap-in, how was that communicated back to the potential stakeholders that could benefit from that? So I'm just not aware of when and how either of those were communicated.
It was communicated, as well as working on a discount on the trenches and the loan program. This topic has been discussed probably for 10, 10 years.
Letters were sent to every affected, any homeowner who had a, who had a septic tank and/or needed to connect.
You know, as, as Code Department does the enforcement, as we're working with people, they're also messaging that as well, you know. If your system doesn't pass, you're sent letters, we talk, we introduce the loan program, we're, I'm sorry, we, we introduce, the Code Department introduces the assistance, we work to get these things resolved, and some of them do go through the court system, and working through our district court, we work for resolution, what kind of financial assistance can we provide, and what will, you know, we put it all up. The homeowner always has the option of rebuilding their system or connecting. Now, I think this is a matter of public health and safety, protecting the general public from how these waste materials are removed. And, you know, how quickly do they move downstream and are treated? And the, you know, I think a lot of folks, I've had people in my office who are shocked to learn they're on septic. In particular homes that were bought during the foreclosure crisis, the due diligence didn't happen, they maybe bought it from the bank, then they find out they're on septic. I had an engineer who'd bought a home, got a good deal, and finds, and he's, well, I live in a city, and just floored that they're someplace that's on septic. And it's, you know, the city made the investment to make this happen over 25 years ago, and you know, we're slowly getting there, we're about halfway there, but we need, we need to get there.
Councilman Hines?
Can we at some point have an ongoing video on Cable 15 that addresses this? Because the bad news and the wrong news is getting out more than the correct news. And I think that the residents, some may not get to the internet to see, but I think they need to hear the truth, because the wrong news keeps getting out, and the city is being attacked, for lack of any other word, for lack of information and the wrong information, and not, not even logic information. So I think we need to have something from our perspective, as elected officials in this city, representing the city, to let the residents know the truth about what this is. We are Southfield, we are not Detroit, we are not any other city, and we are better than those cities with what we do with our city services, and what we have to offer our residents. And I think, like Charles said, with communication, we need to get that out, because the wrong news can often be deterred as being the right news to the people that get it from the wells. And when you get it from the wrong source, it's just, it's just bad. You know, I didn't know I had a septic field, I didn't know when I first moved in my house, I was not told that. And I had to understand that, and I had to do some information, it took me some time to still understand that. So, you know, I, I had to dig for that too, because I didn't even know I had a septic field. So I'm not going to fault the city for that, because the person that sold me the house withheld that or whatever, you know, and now all those things have changed. But we are going to do a better job at getting our residents the right information, because we can't keep having the same stuff come up here all the time with just the wrong information. It's just, it's not good, and I'm tired of it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Wow, 2024 is flying by like no other year before. We have an election this year, presidential election, as we all know, on November the 5th, just turn on your television, and you'll see all of the promotion for different candidacies. And I just want to say, this election is going to be huge, from all I've been told. And we'll need more election workers and precinct polling workers to help on Election Day, which is November the 5th again. The day's work does pay over $200, and there's a training that is required that pays $25. But you can also volunteer, we would love for you to volunteer if that's in your heart, because we need all hands on deck. So please contact my office via phone. So please contact my office via phone, or our office, our, not my, our office via phone, 248-796-5150, or online through the City of Southfield's website, City Clerk tab, the inspectors application, that's the name of the workers that we're hiring for Election Day, is online. You can complete it online and send it to us. One more reminder, early voting is going to transpire this year, starting in October, October 26th through Sunday, November the 3rd, with a late night on Halloween, October 31st, from 12:00 noon until 8:00 p.m. Any resident can come here to City Hall and vote early and avoid the lines on Election Day. It will help the process. So as we get out the absentee ballots, don't hold your ballot till Election Day. That kind of defeats the process. Send it back as soon as you can, and that will help with our numbers and our counts on Election Night. Michigan is a battleground state, as we have heard, and Southfield is in the midst of that. So thank you, and remember, you can call the clerk's office at 248-796-5150. I'd love to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Building Official, do you have anything?
I have nothing at this time.
All right. Madam Attorney?
Good evening. I have nothing at this time.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes?
A move that we go into closed session for discussion of the attorney's opinion, which is exempt from discussion or disclosure.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to go into a closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, can I please have a roll call?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Council Pro Tem Banks. Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hoag?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Mandabon?
Yes.
We have a call and a majority vote.
Thank you. We will move to the room next door for our closed session. Thank you, everyone.